Good evening and welcome to the June 13, 2024, meeting of the Wallen Creek Planning Commission. Secretary, would you please take the role?
Commissioner Quoc.
Present.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
President, sorry.
Commissioner Reiser.
Here.
Commissioner Nating.
Here.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Here.
Chair Strongman.
Here. Thank you. And moving on to the consent calendar, we have one item on the consent calendar of the adoption of the minutes of May 9, 2024. Is there any member of the commission who would like to either poll it to discuss or make a motion to accept it?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Well, Secretary, please take the role again.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to public communications, this is the portion of our meeting which is open to the public to make any comment that is not on the agenda. And if you would like to make a comment to the commission that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to approach the speaker's podium right now to do so. Seeing none, moving in that direction, we will close public communications and move on to our hearings. Our first hearing is the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts application for an extension. And would staff give a presentation, please? Oh, excuse me. Has there been any ex parte communications with the -- on this project? Seeing none, thank you. Continue, sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brittany Eleanor, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting an extension request for the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts project that was approved by Planning Commission last year. And so the project included demolition of the existing buildings onsite and redevelopment with one three-story self-storage facility, one one-story office building, and a two-story microbrewery. The site also included development of a dog park, a community garden, and during the construction phase, there is a temporary Cali-Craft brewery layout so that it can stay operating while the site's under construction. So all of that required a design review, conditional use permit, minor use permit, and tree removal permit. And so it went through the process with Design Review Commission as a study session. So they provided review of the signed regulations and preliminary design review. It then went to Planning Commission twice. The first time, there was some discussion from the neighbors regarding noise. And so at the second hearing, the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared included a section about operational noise to address that. The Planning Commission then decided to certify the negative declaration and approve the conditional use permits for the storage and microbrewery uses, as well as the minor use permit for the off-site parking and the tree removal permits. So then it went to design review for final design review. And it just recently, in May of 2024 of this year, went to an ad hoc Design Review Commission meeting for their landscape details. So the applicant is actively working on the project. So in regards to CEQA, there has been no changes that's been made to the project, and there's no new or additional information. So the mitigated negative declaration that Planning Commission approved last year was filed as a notice of determination on June 9, 2023. And so, in summary, staff does recommend to adopt the draft resolutions extending these entitlements for two years, and that would be valid through June of 2026. And so I'm available for any questions or comments, and the applicant team representatives are as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anybody of the Commissioners like to ask questions of staff? Commissioner Anderson.
Just, I was curious, the original permits were given for one year with a possible one-year extension, assuming that they thought it would be done in a year or perhaps two. It's been a year, and now they asked for a two-year extension, you're recommending a two-year extension. What has changed?
So the two-year extension is just based off the scope, there is two phases, and so permitting has been a little juggling, trying to get that going. And so we just feel it's appropriate to ask for a two-year extension so we don't have to come back next year in case that happens. And mind you, the extension will not be necessary once they get building permits issued, they just have not done that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Staff. Seeing none, we will now open it up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comments on this project. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on it, and includes the actual applicant, they're welcome to come forward and do so at this point in time. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission. For either comments, questions, or a motion.
Question, possibly a motion, are these are three CUPs, do we do them separately? Are we -- do we recommend extending them separately?
Sorry, you should do separate motions for -- to adopt each of the resolutions.
Okay, so I'll start by making a motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3926, the CUP for storage use, ISO move.
Second. Please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to public communications, this is the portion of our meeting which is open to the public to make any comment that is not on the agenda. And we will, if you would like to make a comment to the commission that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to approach the speaker's podium right now to do so. Seeing none, moving in that direction, we will close public communications and move on to our hearings. Our first hearing is the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts application for an extension. And would staff give a presentation, please? Oh, excuse me, has there been any ex parte communications with the -- on this project? Seeing none, thank you. Continue, sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brittany Eleanor, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting an extension request for a -- the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts project that was approved by Planning Commission last year. And so the project included demolition of the existing buildings onsite and redevelopment with one three-story self-storage facility, one one-story office building, and a two-story microbrewery. The site also included development of a dog park, a community garden, and during the construction phase, there is a temporary Cali-Craft brewery layout so that it can stay operating while the site's under construction. So all of that required a design review, conditional use permit, minor use permit, and tree removal permit. And so it went through the process with Design Review Commission as a study session, so they provided review of the signed regulations and preliminary design review. It then went to Planning Commission twice. The first time, there was some discussion from the neighbors regarding noise. And so at the second hearing, the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared included a section about operational noise to address that. The Planning Commission then decided to certify the negative declaration and approve the conditional use permits for the storage and microbrewery uses, as well as the minor use permit for the off-site parking and the tree removal permits. So then it went to design review for final design review, and it just recently, in May of 2024 of this year, went to an ad hoc Design Review Commission meeting for their landscape details. So the applicant is actively working on the project. So in regards to CEQA, there has been no changes that's been made to the project, and there's no new or additional information. So the mitigated negative declaration that Planning Commission approved last year was filed as a notice of determination on June 9, 2023. And so, in summary, staff does recommend to adopt the draft resolutions extending these entitlements for two years, and that would be valid through June of 2026. And so I'm available for any questions or comments, and the applicant team representatives are as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anybody of the Commissioners like to ask questions of staff? Commissioner Anderson.
Just, I was curious, the original permits were given for one year with a possible one-year extension, assuming that they thought it would be done in a year or perhaps two. It's been a year, and now they asked for a two-year extension, you're recommending a two-year extension. What has changed?
So the two-year extension is just based off the scope, there is two phases, and so permitting has been a little juggling, trying to get that going. And so we just feel it's appropriate to ask for a two-year extension so we don't have to come back next year in case that happens. And mind you, the extension will not be necessary once they get building permits issued, they just have not done that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Staff. Seeing none, we will now open it up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comments on this project. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on it, and includes the actual applicant, they're welcome to come forward and do so at this point in time. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission. For either comments, questions, or a motion.
Question, possibly a motion, are these are three CUPs, do we do them separately? Are we -- do we recommend extending them separately?
Sorry, you should do separate motions for -- to adopt each of the resolutions.
Okay, so I'll start by making a motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3926, the CUP for storage use, ISO move.
Second. Please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to public communications, this is the portion of our meeting which is open to the public to make any comment that is not on the agenda. And we will, if you would like to make a comment to the commission that is not on the agenda, you're welcome to approach the speaker's podium right now to do so. Seeing none, moving in that direction, we will close public communications and move on to our hearings. Our first hearing is the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts application for an extension. And would staff give a presentation, please? Oh, excuse me, has there been any ex parte communications with the -- on this project? Seeing none, thank you. Continue, sorry.
Good evening, Commissioners. Brittany Eleanor, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting an extension request for a -- the Shadlands Secure Space Cali-Crafts project that was approved by Planning Commission last year. And so the project included demolition of the existing buildings onsite and redevelopment with one three-story self-storage facility, one one-story office building, and a two-story microbrewery. The site also included development of a dog park, a community garden, and during the construction phase, there is a temporary Cali-Crafts brewery layout so that it can stay operating while the site's under construction. So all of that required a design review, conditional use permit, minor use permit, and tree removal permit. And so it went through the process with Design Review Commission as a study session, so they provided review of the signed regulations and preliminary design review. It then went to Planning Commission twice. The first time, there was some discussion from the neighbors regarding noise. And so at the second hearing, the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared included a section about operational noise to address that. The Planning Commission then decided to certify the negative declaration and approve the conditional use permits for the storage and microbrewery uses, as well as the minor use permit for the off-site parking and the tree removal permits. So then it went to design review for final design review, and it just recently, in May of 2024 of this year, went to an ad hoc Design Review Commission meeting for their landscape details. So the applicant is actively working on the project. So in regards to CEQA, there has been no changes that's been made to the project, and there's no new or additional information. So the mitigated negative declaration that Planning Commission approved last year was filed as a notice of determination on June 9, 2023. And so, in summary, staff does recommend to adopt the draft resolutions extending these entitlements for two years, and that would be valid through June of 2026. And so I'm available for any questions or comments, and the applicant team representatives are as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anybody of the Commissioners like to ask questions of staff? Commissioner Anderson.
Just, I was curious, the original permits were given for one year with a possible one-year extension, assuming that they thought it would be done in a year or perhaps two. It's been a year, and now they asked for a two-year extension, you're recommending a two-year extension. What has changed?
So the two-year extension is just based off the scope, there is two phases, and so permitting has been a little juggling, trying to get that going. And so we just feel it's appropriate to ask for a two-year extension so we don't have to come back next year in case that happens. And mind you, the extension will not be necessary once they get building permits issued, they just have not done that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Staff. Seeing none, we will now open it up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comments on this project. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on it, and includes the actual applicant, they're welcome to come forward and do so at this point in time. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission. For either comments, questions, or a motion.
Question, possibly a motion, are these are three CUPs, do we do them separately? Are we -- do we recommend extending them separately?
Sorry, you should do separate motions for -- to adopt each of the resolutions.
Okay, so I'll start by making a motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3926, the CUP for storage use, ISO move.
Second. Please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3929, a CUP for the microbrewery use and MUP for off-site parking, and ISO move.
Second. Again, please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Chair -- Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Staff. Seeing none, we will now open it up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comments on this project. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on it, and includes the actual applicant, they're welcome to come forward and do so at this point in time. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission. For either comments, questions, or a motion.
Question, possibly a motion, are these are three CUPs, do we do them separately? Are we -- do we recommend extending them separately?
Sorry, you should do separate motions for -- to adopt each of the resolutions.
Okay, so I'll start by making a motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3926, the CUP for storage use, ISO move.
Second. Please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3929, a CUP for the microbrewery use and MUP for off-site parking, and ISO move.
Second. Again, please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Chair -- Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3929, a CUP for the microbrewery use and MUP for off-site parking, and ISO move.
Second. Again, please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3929, a CUP for the microbrewery use and MUP for off-site parking, and ISO move.
Second. Again, please take the role.
Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Chair -- Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice -- Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll make it a hat trick, I move to -- move to approve the resolution to extend PC -- the resolution Number 3930 for the tree removal and ISO move.
Second. And the role again.
Commissioner -- Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice -- Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll make it a hat trick, I move to -- move to approve the resolution to extend PC -- the resolution Number 3930 for the tree removal and ISO move.
Second. And the role again.
Commissioner -- Commissioner Quoc.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klopp.
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser.
Yes.
Commissioner Nating.
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Strongman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we're all looking forward to this project being completed.
Moving on to 4B, the ordinance implementing zoning updates for emergency shelters for
the unhoused, low-barrier navigation centers, and transitional and supportive housing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, it's nice to see you again.
Before we get started.
Sorry. Any ex parte communications or other comments?
Hi, I am the Board Chair for Trinity Center, and given that we operate an emergency shelter on behalf of the city, I'm going to recuse myself from this item, so have fun.
Thank you. Anybody else for communications or comments? Thank you. We'll go on with the presentation.
Okay, good evening, my name is Aaron Sage, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting this item to you tonight. As the Chair mentioned, this is related to zoning updates for emergency shelters for the unhoused, low-barrier navigation centers, and transitional and supportive housing. And these four uses are sometimes collectively referred to as special needs housing types because they address a need that is not frequently or easily addressed by sort of non-special typical housing products that you find in the marketplace. So I want to start by kind of giving some policy guidance that we have from the housing element. Really, one of the main reasons we're here tonight is that we've committed in our housing element in Program H4C that we will quote "review and update the zoning ordinance and related policies pertaining to emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers." You'll sometimes see the acronym LBNCs on some of the slides. Transitional and supportive housing, and group care facilities to conform to state requirements. As noted in the staff report, group care facilities is being more specifically addressed -- is more specifically addressed by several other housing element programs which have a later timeframe, so we are not addressing those with tonight's agenda item. These are a few of the specific items that are listed in the program. We need to amend the definitions for these uses, not all of them, but several of them, to align with state law. We need to allow emergency shelters, navigation centers, and supportive housing by right in the zones that are specified by state law, and we'll get into those details. We need to craft objective standards for shelters, and we need to remove the parking requirement that we currently have for emergency shelter residents. So the next few slides will focus on emergency shelters. So first off, just to kind of frame, under state law, how this use is defined, the key components in the state definition are that it's housing for homeless persons, that it has minimal support services, it has a six-month occupancy limit, and there can be no denial of shelter to a person due to their inability to pay. State law requires several important things for this use. First of all, each local government must identify at least one zone which allows and is suitable for residential uses where emergency shelters are allowed by right. Next --
Brittany Eleanor, Associate Planner with the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting an extension request for a, the Shadland Secure Space Cali Craft project that was approved by Planning Commission last year. And so the project included demolition of the existing buildings onsite and redevelopment with one three-story self-storage facility, one one-story office building, and a two-story microbrewery. And the site also include development of a dog park, a community garden, and during the construction phase, there is a temporary Cali Craft brewery layout so that it can stay operating while the site's under construction. So all of that required a design review, conditional use permit, minor use permit, and tree removal permit. And so it went through the process with Design Review Commission as a study session. So they provided review of the signed regulations and preliminary design review. It then went to Planning Commission twice. The first time, there was some discussion from the neighbors regarding noise. And so at the second hearing, the mitigated negative declaration that was prepared included a section about operational noise to address that. The Planning Commission then decided to certify the negative declaration and approve the conditional use permits for the storage and microbrewery uses, as well as the minor use permit for the off-site parking and the tree removal permits. So then it went to Design Review for final design review. And it just recently, in May of 2024 of this year, went to an ad hoc Design Review Commission meeting for their landscape details. So the applicant is actively working on the project. So in regards to CEQA, there has been no changes that's been made to the project, and there's no new or additional information. So the mitigated negative declaration that Planning Commission approved last year was filed as a notice of determination on June 9th, 2023. And so, in summary, staff does recommend to adopt the draft resolutions extending these entitlements for two years, and that would be valid through June of 2026. And so I'm available for any questions or comments, and the applicant team representatives are as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anybody of the commissioners like to ask questions of staff? Commissioner Anderson?
Just, I was curious, the, the original permits were given for one year with a possible one-year extension, assuming that they thought it would be done in a year or perhaps two. It's been a year, and now they asked for a two-year extension, you're recommending a two-year extension.
Yes.
What has changed?
So the two-year extension is just based off the scope. There is two phases, and so permitting has been a little juggling, trying to get that going. And so we just feel it's appropriate to ask for a two-year extension so we don't have to come back next year in case that happens. And mind you, the extension will not be necessary once they get building permits issued. They just have not done that yet.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Staff. Seeing none, we will now open it up, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Open it up to public comments on this project. If anyone from the audience would like to make a comment on it, and includes the actual applicant, they're welcome to come forward and do so at this point in time. Seeing nobody rushing to the podium, we will close public comments and bring it back to the commission. For either comments, questions, or a motion.
Question, possibly a motion. Are, these are three CUPs, do we do them separately? Are we, do we recommend extending them separately?
Sorry, you should do separate motions for, to adopt each of the resolutions.
Okay. So I'll start by making a motion to extend PC Resolution Number 3926, the CUP for storage use. I so move.
Second. Please take the roll.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Natting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Moving on, motion to, to extend PC Resolution Number 3929, a CUP for the microbrewery use and MUP for off-site parking, and I so move.
Second. Again, please take the roll.
Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Natting?
Yes.
Vice, Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll make it a hat trick. I move to, move to approve the resolution to extend PC, the Resolution Number 3930 for the tree removal, and I so move.
Second. And the roll again.
Commissioner, Commissioner Kwak?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Natting?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we're all looking forward to this project being completed. Moving on to 4B, the ordinance implementing zoning updates for emergency shelters for the unhoused, low-barrier navigation centers, and transitional and supportive housing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello, it's nice to see you again.
Before we get started?
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Any ex parte communications or other comments?
Hi, I am the Board Chair for Trinity Center, and given that we operate an emergency shelter on behalf of the city, I'm going to recuse myself from this item. So have fun.
Anybody else for communications or comments? Thank you. We'll go on with the presentation.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Aaron Sage, Principal Planner with the Community Development Department, and I'll be presenting this item to you tonight. As the Chair mentioned, this is related to zoning updates for emergency shelters for the unhoused, low-barrier navigation centers, and transitional and supportive housing. And these four uses are sometimes collectively referred to as special needs housing types because they address a need that is not frequently or easily addressed by sort of non-special typical housing products that you find in the marketplace. So I want to start by kind of giving some policy guidance that we have from the housing element. Really, one of the main reasons we're here tonight is that we've committed in our housing element in Program H4C that we will, quote, "review and update the zoning ordinance and related policies pertaining to emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers." You'll sometimes see the acronym LBNCs on some of the slides. Transitional and supportive housing and group care facilities to conform to state requirements. As noted in the staff report, group care facilities is, is being more specifically addressed, is more specifically addressed by several other housing element programs which have a later timeframe. So we are not addressing those with tonight's agenda item. These are a few of the specific items that are listed in the program. We need to amend the definitions for these uses, not all of them, but, but several of them, to align with state law. We need to allow emergency shelters, navigation centers, and supportive housing by right in the zones that are specified by state law, and we'll, we'll get into those details. We need to craft objective standards for shelters, and we need to remove the parking requirement that we currently have for emergency shelter residents. So the next few slides will focus on emergency shelters. So first off, just to kind of frame, under state law, how this use is defined, the key components in the state definition are that it's housing for homeless persons, that it has minimal support services, it has a six-month occupancy limit, and there can be no denial of shelter to a person due to their inability to pay. State law requires several important things for this use. First of all, each local government must identify at least one zone which allows and is suitable for residential uses where emergency shelters are allowed by right. Next, an, an agency is allowed to adopt standards, not required, but allowed to adopt standards for emergency shelters. However, those standards, if adopted, must be objective, and they must encourage and facilitate emergency shelters. And later on, I'll show you the, the seven or eight specific standards that the state allows. Finally, there's a specification that parking cannot be required for residents. It can be required for employees of the shelter, but not residents. So this map shows where emergency shelters are currently allowed in Walnut Creek. The pink is where they're not allowed, so you can focus on the other colors. The green is the ASCM District, Automobile Sales and Service, Custom Manufacturing. And in that zone, we allow the use by right, but it has to be located above the ground floor. It's not permitted on the ground floor. And that essentially conflicts with state law because that's a significant constraint to shelters located in that district because there are very few multi-story buildings in that district, and it's very difficult for a, a shelter to be built. It obviously costs more money to build a new multi-story building and then to, to manage a, a ground floor space for another use. The other use, other than ASCM, where shelters are allowed by right, is in the Central Retail District, and that's only if it's located more than 500 feet from a residential zone. And so to, to see that, you, it's very hard to see. So this slide here, we zoom in on, on the eight or nine parcels in the CR zone that are more than 500 feet from any residential zone, and therefore those nine parcels could accommodate an emergency shelter by right. The golden rod areas are, are other zones that allow this use with a conditional use permit, or in the case of the Central Retail, that are less than 500 feet from a residential zone, and that also triggers a conditional use permit. We'll come back to this, to that use when we talk about the standards, but let's talk about low-barrier navigation centers. So the definition of this, and this is essentially a subtype of emergency shelters. It's a more specific definition, a specific type of, of shelter. But it's defined in state law as being, having a housing-first approach, being service-enriched as opposed to minimal support services that we saw in the other use, having case managers that connect residents to the services that they need to eventually move into permanent housing, such as finding jobs, building life skills, et cetera. And then finally, it has this component to reduce some things that are common barriers to people being willing or able to enter into a shelter. And that includes having a partner, having a pet, having certain possessions, or having a need for privacy, such as, you know, a screen or a partition in between beds. So these requirements and that definition come from a recent state bill from 2018, which basically said if, if a use meets that definition, it is then allowed by right in mixed-use zones and non-residential zones that permit multifamily uses. And I'll show you a map that indicates where those are located. But i- i- in order to be allowed by right, not only would a use have to meet that definition, but it would also have to have services that connect people to permanent housing, and it would have to have a coordinated entry system. And there's some other items that are also required. So if those requirements are met, then these are the areas of the city where, under current state law, this use is allowed by right. And what we're doing as part of this amendment is simply updating our zoning to match what is already required under state law. So the uses, those uses are listed on the left there, but it's essentially, most of our, our zoning districts, some of the exceptions would be the Business Park District, the single-family and duplex zones, the community facility zone, basically those are the, the handful of zones that don't fall within the, the language in state law, but all the rest do. And those are shown in the green. Okay, moving on to objective standards for shelters. Now this, this would apply to emergency shelters and low-barrier navigation centers, which as I mentioned are a subtype of emergency shelters. So on the left are listed the different types of standards that we are allowed to adopt under state law. The first one is the maximum number of beds or persons. We're proposing 50 beds, that's based on the maximum capacity of our current winter That standard and the other ones that are marked with an asterisk could be modified through a discretionary permit process, through a conditional use permit, or in a couple of other cases, a lesser level of permit. Parking, state law, as I indicated, does not allow us to have a residential parking requirement for shelters, so that's proposed to be deleted. We already have a standard of one per employee, which is okay under state law as long as we add the caveat that if there happens to be another use allowed in the same zone that would have a lower employee parking requirement, then that lower requirement is what will apply. There, there are no, there are no standards of less than one per employee, but sometimes if you have a use that's regulated where the parking is required based on floor area, that could in theory result in a lower requirement if it's a use that is, is only employees and doesn't have customers. Waiting and intake area, proposing a standard of 10 square feet per bed, but not less than 100 square feet, and it must be indoors. That could be modified with a CUP. On-site management and security is required at all times when the facility is open to clients or residents. But also for management, that needs to be provided starting one hour before the shelter opens until one hour after it closes to help with transition of clients in, in and out of the facility. Proximity to other shelters, this is basically a minimum distance requirement between shelters to prevent them from being over-concentrated in any particular area. This is allowed under state law, but it has to be no more than 300 feet. And when you look at other cities, standards for this, 300 feet is pretty much always what's adopted. That's what we've included, but again, with the flexibility to reduce that with a CUP. Length of stay is allowed as well, however, that's already covered by the state definition, so we're not proposing anything beyond just adopting the state definition for emergency shelters. And then lighting is also allowed. In this case, we are basically cross-referencing to the recent objective lighting standards that you recommended and council adopted in May. Those include things like maximum pole height, maximum intensity of light, near-residential minimum intensity otherwise. And then there's also a reference to any further objective design standards, such as the ones that are going to be coming up through the Non-Residential Design Review Standards and Guidelines book later this year. So that's standards for shelters. We'll move on now to transitional housing. So this is basically defined under state law as a rental housing development that has a maximum of six months of assistance provided, and at that point, the resident would need to move out and free up that spot for someone else. The whole point of this use is basically to be kind of, as the name implies, a transition between being homeless and, and being in permanent housing. The key thing to, to recognize with this use under state law is that it is not meant to be treated, it is not considered as a separate type of use than whatever type of residential building it's occupying. You can have a single-family dwelling that's a transitional home. You can have a multifamily apartment building that's a transitional home. You can have a residential care facility that's a transitional housing facility as well. And state law says, basically, you can only apply the same restrictions that you're applying to dwellings of the same type in the same zone. So what we're doing in our, in our amendments is basically listing this use in all of the districts that have residential uses, and we're putting a note saying, you know, it's not treated as a separate use, it's just subject to the same restrictions as the underlying use within, the underlying use classification within which it is operating. Currently in our code, there are two zones, the, the R-zone and the SFH-PD1-zone, where transitional housing is listed, but then it says it's only allowed if it's operating as a residential care home, which is six or fewer residents, and it's a, a facility licensed by the state. That does not conform to state law. Transitional housing has to be permitted, whatever, whatever uses you allow in a zone, it has to be permitted to be transitional housing, subject to those same restrictions. So those restrictions are, are proposed to be removed. And then we're also removing the specific parking standard that we have for transitional housing because, as I mentioned, we don't get to apply a unique standard to this use, we just refer to the standards of the underlying use. So we've added a note in the parking table to do that. All right, moving on now to supportive housing. State law defines this as housing that has no limit on stay, so as, as distinguished from transitional housing or emergency shelters, that is occupied, occupied by a target population, and there's a definition of that that basically has to do with, you know, services being targeted toward a specific need group. And then importantly, this use has to have either onsite or off-site services that are connecting people to the, the services and the life skills that they need to be able to become, you know, to find permanent housing and to stay in permanent housing. Although supportive housing, again, has no limit, so in theory, that could be permanent housing as well. State law requires, very similar to transitional housing, has actually the same requirement, that we can only apply the same restrictions that apply to other dwellings of the same type in the same zone. So again, supportive housing, we're not treating that as a different type of use, we're basically just saying, you know, if it's a single-family supportive housing development, we, we apply all the same rules as a single-family, and then same thing for multifamily or whatever category it happens to fall into. Now, there's a bill from 2018 called AB 2162, which you may have heard of. The Hope Village Project at Grace Presbyterian Church utilized this law. But what this law does is it basically says, we're going to specify some additional requirements for supportive housing, and if a use meets those requirements, then it's allowed by right in multifamily and mixed-use zones, meaning zones that have both multifamily and mixed-use in the same zone. And some of those requirements are listed here. The project would have to be, 100% of the units would have to be dedicated for lower-income households, except for the manager's unit. At least 25% of the units would have to be allocated or reserved for the target population. There has to be a services plan that conforms to a set of requirements of state law. There has to be a minimum amount of, of floor area onsite for supportive services, and all units have to have a bathroom and a kitchen. So we're proposing the same amendment as transitional housing. We're going to be listing this use in all the zones that allow residential uses with the note that we treat it the same as the underlying use. And then we're going to have a second note for supportive housing referring to the provisions of AB 2162 and specifying that, under those circumstances, the use is allowed by right. We'll, we'll add the use to the parking table, again with the note that we refer to the underlying use for the parking standard. And then this map shows where, which zones would require the by-right approval for projects falling under AB 2162. Very similar to the Low Barrier Navigation Center. Actually, the, it's the same zones, just a couple of caveats on the M District and the MHD District. Caveat, the caveats are on the low barrier, and in this case, there, there would be no Okay, wanted to wrap up with a few slides, kind of taking it back to the, the background and the, kind of what, how we got here from a policy standpoint. Just wanted to highlight some of City Council's priorities that relate to this agenda item. Under diversity, equity, and inclusion, the council would like to keep building on the progress made to further establish Walnut Creek as an inclusive community that welcomes diversity. I think it's obvious that addressing these special needs housing types furthers our, our progress on diversity, equity, and inclusion. And then, under the heading of Public Safety and Social Wellness, ensure Walnut Creek is a safe community through more innovative and effective responses to homelessness and mental health challenges. And then going back to the housing element, one goal that relates is H3, provide a range of housing opportunities for Walnut Creek residents to encourage economic mobility, particularly residents with special needs, including persons experiencing homelessness and extremely low-income residents, both of which would benefit greatly from these types of, of uses. And under that goal, we have Policy H31, to prioritize the development of housing that meets the needs of special needs groups. We also have Goal H4, minimize the impact of potential governmental constraints such as prohibitions on, on uses or the, the prohibition on the ground floor in the ASCM that I mentioned. But minimize the impact of those constraints by, under Policy H41, amending the zoning ordinance to comply with current state laws regarding emergency shelters, transitional and supportive housing, group care facilities, and other housing types. And here's the staff recommendation, asking you to consider the proposed zoning ordinance amendments, to update provisions for the following uses to conform to state requirements. I won't read those since I've named those several times tonight. And of course, adopt a resolution recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed amendments. Thanks for your attention and happy to take any questions.
Thank you for a very detailed presentation. Do we have questions of staff? Go, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. On the, the emergency shelter districts, you mentioned the one at Newell and Main Street there. But the, the larger one, still a fairly modest amount, is in the, yes, there. The green section there, in between Broadway and Main Street. Since a, a large, significant fraction of that is going to, going to be developed by the Toyota Group, but they're not quite sure how it's going to develop yet. Have you done any contact or coordination with them as far as perhaps, you know, including an emergency shelter and their plans?
We have not contacted Toyota about this specific ordinance change. I suspect that they will have a very specific development proposal for their property.
Okay, therefore, thank you. We will now move it on to pub, public hearing. Is any member of the public would like to speak on this subject? Please approach the podium. Thank you.
Chair Strongman, Vice Chair Anderson, continuing and new members of the Planning Commission, it's always a pleasure to be with you. My name is Leslie Gleason, and I serve as Executive Director of Trinity Center Walnut Creek. And because we are an emergency shelter provider, and we provide case management and supportive services to supportive housing right here in Walnut Creek, we are very supportive of moving forward, and the staff's recommendation to move this forward for council action. We have been appreciative of the opportunity to give feedback based on our experience as a shelter operator on the proposed ordinance, and we are 100% behind everything that moves us forward with the housing element that everybody worked so hard on. So beginning to take the concrete steps towards that is a wonderful thing. Not only that, it really will open up opportunities and options going forward for us to add to the housing stock that we need to meet the needs for all of us in our community. So we encourage and, and request that you move this forward to City Council. Thank you, as always, for your time and support for our programs, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close public hea, the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for a discussion and/or recommendation.
I just thought of a, a quick question, if I may. It might be directed to staff here. Do, and it was when Leslie got up, I, the thought just crossed my mind, is there an opportunity for an intake to happen? Does intake have to happen on one site, on the actual site? So you don't see like one int, an intake? So you don't see, like, an intake center that is responsible for other satellite-type facilities?
I'm not aware of any requirement in state law that the intake has to be done at the same location, but...
Yeah, I don't think there is a requirement. I think just depends on the configuration of the facilities, and if that's their operational model, then that can take place, provided they just comply with the other objective standards.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Anyone else? How about a recommendation?
I'll move the resolution, also the resolution number XXXX. In fact, it's got a different official number that's proposed in the packet for the zoning ordinance amendment, regulations for emergency shelters, low-barrier navigation centers, transitional housing, and supportive housing consistent with state law, and the 2023-2031 housing element.
And I'll just clarify for the commission that your recommendation is on the draft ordinance and the errata sheet that's in your packet.
I'll second it. Please take the roll, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Klop?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward is absent. Commissioner Klop has recused herself. Commissioner Reiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Nating?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Strongman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And could we take a one-minute break while we bring our wayward commissioner back?
Yes, please.
Do we know where she went?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Henry Rude. I'm an assistant planner with the Traffic Engineering Division of Public Works, and I also collaborated with the Community Development Project, excuse me, the Community Development Department on this parking ordinance update. The major components are a revision to our parking minimums for multifamily residential parking structures, several provisions to comply with state laws, some adjustments to our bicycle parking regulations, new provisions for transportation demand management, building on what we have in our Rethinking Mobility Plan, and some other technical edits to clean things up in the zoning ordinance. So for a bit of background, our housing element identifies limited supply and high cost of land as a major constraint on new housing. Part of that high cost is parking. We are committed per our housing element to review and modify development standards that can pose a constraint to development. This not only includes parking implicitly, but it is explicitly noted that we are committed to amending the zoning ordinance to reduce parking minimum requirements per our housing We conducted a parking study last year that is recently completed, looking at 11 large multifamily complexes to try to observe the real demand for parking for these residential structures and see how we can adjust our standards to better match that demand. In every single case, we observed substantially lower demand out in the real world than our current regulations would require. So accordingly, the study recommended that our parking minimums be lowered. This would allow developers more flexibility to build less or the same amount of parking as before. It opens up options to potentially lower the cost of housing. There are also provisions in the update to better address and comply with AB 894. This requires local agencies to allow shared parking agreements, so we would be removing the requirement for minor use permits on these agreements. We're also updating to comply with AB 1308, which prohibits agencies from requiring additional parking for single-family revisions. Essentially, if you're changing your house within certain scope, we can no longer require you to add extra parking. Finally, the big one, AB 2097. This is a state law that requires agencies to set parking minimums to zero for both commercial and residential within a half-mile of major transit facilities. In Walnut Creek, this is Walnut Creek BART and Pleasant Hill BART. You can see on the map what areas are within that half-mile radius of each. This is not universal. The agency can submit written findings that not enforcing parking requirements would have a substantially negative impact on housing for some, but not all, projects. They're detailed in the staff report, but essentially, under most circumstances, the bottom line is that in these areas, the parking minimums will be zero per state law. Part of this is a knock-on effect. Our current bicycle parking requirements are derived from our automobile parking, so that would mean that in those areas, as written, the bicycle parking requirements would be zero. So as part of this update, we are also updating the bicycle parking standards to better comply with best practices and stand on their own instead of being related to automobile. This lets us adjust the requirements of both without it affecting the other. And we're also including ratios for long-term versus short-term parking based on land use. If you think about, like, an office building for employees, they require more, you know, long-term bicycle parking. Well, retail, it's more in-and-out, it's more short-term. We're also adding new provisions for transportation demand management. This is building on the existing line of policy in our Rethinking Mobility Plan, and it relates also to AB 2097. So essentially, this regulates, requires developers to submit a transportation demand management plan. If they are planning to provide less parking, it allows us to see how they intend to limit the impact of that reduced parking. Generally, this is through, you know, measures to encourage mode shift at their facilities, you know, transit, ride-sharing. This would refer to an external policy document that can be updated more regularly, somewhat similar to the way the objective design standards are, an external document that's referred to in the code. Some other more minor updates, we're replacing community, community development director is going to be put everywhere instead of planning manager. We're also treating medical and general offices consistently between each other, and some additional updates to the community commercial parking ratios and covered parking provisions. So this is a study session. No formal action will be taken at this meeting. In two weeks, I will be bringing a draft ordinance for you to recommend an action to council on, and then we are currently scheduled for a July 23rd for City Council to review the ordinance. This will keep us on track to meet the, meet our commitments in the housing element, which require these amended minimums by fall of 2024. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. I'm happy to help clarify anything you'd like.
Thank you for your presentation, and I guess we'll just start out with who would like to jump in.
Hi, thank you so much for this great information. I did have one question, the company, I think it was LEAP, just, oh, LEED? LEED?
Yes, so LEAP is the, it's a housing grant. The parking study was funded as part of a much larger housing grant.
Oh, okay.
It's local, early-action planning. Let me, yeah, here we go.
Yeah.
And it's from the state.
And they described their process of going in and counting how many cars were parked at midnight, several dates they had. And then they described a process of sort of public input in what the changes were that they were recommending, but that was sort of like, just as a fly-by mention. Do you know who they met with and how that all went?
Yes, so I was present at both stakeholder meetings that we held with our consultant that was used for the parking study, Farr and Peers. We had one meeting initially to solicit input from, you know, developers, community members, stakeholders, you know, on what parking means to them, how minimums can affect things. And then after the study was completed and we had this data showing the observed demand, we had another meeting to discuss, you know, with these stakeholders, the prospect of lowering minimums.
Okay.
And in both cases, the stakeholders were supportive.
They thought it was reasonable. Great. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Anderson?
I get the impression that there was a discussion of, that the levels in the North Downtown Specific Plan were lower than in other areas, and perhaps more consistent with what the study indicated was necessary. It seemed like it was sort of aimed at sort of the average occupancy. But I noticed, you know, if you look at it, I'm looking at Table 2 here, but the occupied spaces per occupied unit, they range from 0.88, I assume these are all market apartment buildings, from 0.88 per unit to 1.33, which is, you know, a fair range. If you look at the total spaces per unit, okay, that's, you know, the occupied space we're concerned with. I'm just wondering that, you know, is there, if we just go for an average, or, you know, as what's really needed, there seems to be some variation, perhaps in the particular clientele they have, or, you know, how close they are to different kinds of work situations. It didn't seem like there was accounting for some kind of factor of safety, so that, you know, an apartment building that had, you know, more people working farther away just because of the type of people they attracted, you know, found themselves just with an unworkable minimum amount of parking. Can you adjust whether there's some consideration of not going just for the average, but in fact for some average plus some safety factor in there?
Yeah, so two points relating to that. First of all, those structures where the average amount was, the rate was higher than one per, had a larger amount of multiple bedroom units. So that's why we compared the occupied bedroom in addition to per occupied unit. So it's easy to imagine, you know, if you've got a lot of four-bedroom apartment buildings, they're going to need more parking. So of course, conditions will always vary. There will always be, you know, specific localized concerns, and developers are empowered to build to the demand that they expect based on their specific policies. If they're BART proximate, the Transportation Demand Management Plan will also help identify the specific demand on parking that they expect. But I want to be clear, this is not imposing any additional constraints on development. If they expect a higher demand on parking, they are still welcome to build parking to match that expected demand. This just lowers the minimum that they have to provide, no matter what.
Okay. I also was curious about, and maybe you've answered it as well, but the half-mile radius around the transit stations, where parking has already been provided for existing buildings. Do the requirements for parking that have been imposed on them in the past, those essentially grandfathered in, those requirements will continue to be the requirements for those buildings? They can't turn their garages into more units?
So this, this is about the development standards. So if someone is coming in new, you know, they will not have to build to the old standards. If you've got an existing building and, say, ownership changes and they want to convert existing parking, and it would have a substantial negative impact, that would potentially be a case where the city submits written findings to show that enforcing parking minimums is necessary to avoid that negative impact. And that's all per the state law.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else right now?
So, thank you for sharing this information with us and explaining it to us. It was very informative.
Thank you.
I was curious to know how the bicycle parking standards would stand alone, now that we are considering the parking minimums for car travel and people that use cars. And so as I was reading through the bicycle standards, one of the ones that came, that I came across was the placement of those bicycle parking. And so in those instances where the bicycle parking would be on the, it says, like, if it was placed in the public right-of-way, one of the thoughts that came to my mind is, what if we have, like, the ADA compliance requirements where you have to have a minimum width on the sidewalk? If, I'm hoping that the placement of the bicycle racks would take that into consideration as well?
Yes, of course. So ADA compliance is enforced at all building permits that we review. That takes precedence if there's a conflict, but under most circumstances, we can work, you know, staff, building staff, and, you know, planning and transportation staff can ensure that we have a recommendation that complies with all requirements. The placement also in the downtown area, we've added an INLU provision where publicly-provided bike racks can count towards that requirement, which helps avoid, you know, issues with things being cramped downtown, gives more leeway.
Go for it.
I liked the Barr and Peers letter. I thought it was a good place to start. I wanted to ask about tandem parking and parking stackers, which are pretty prevalent in San Francisco where parking is difficult. Is there, that sometimes actually helps capture area back, that's kind of that unusable area, while still being able to provide parking that may be smaller vehicles? Did you guys plan or think about any, anything to that effect to make the code easier for builders to use?
So we did look into that, and it turns out our current parking regulations do not call out tandem parking separately, so it already counts towards that requirement in the same way. It's not penalized.
So you can use it?
Yes, that's true right now.
Right now, without any...
And it would not change with this either.
And then what about, I did notice their other recommendation was also about the van pool. And it's funny, because when I drive in the Broadway Plaza parking lot, the various floors, I see it's van pool, van pool or EB. Was that also...
Yeah, so the van pool is part of the larger Transportation Demand Management. So that's basically one option of many that can be included in a Transportation Demand Management Plan to show, essentially, if you want to build less parking, to show that you have other avenues that will pick up the slack there and ensure that, you know, the public infrastructure is not overburdened.
Thank you.
Another question?
Just have a comment, I guess, more, the Pleasant Hill BART station within a half-mile that, most of that is not within the city. Is the county implementing a similar program?
Yes, so the county is also required by state law. I'm not sure on their progress to update the ordinance, but the way state law works with local law is that even before you update things to match, it is still considered in effect, and it overrides whatever is written in the county code. So that is also true in Walnut Creek right now. We're just bringing things into consistency.
Okay, thank you. And a question about the shared parking. Occurred to me that is, okay, somebody has a shared parking agreement with a property next door, and for some reason, by choice or natural disaster, that parking is no longer available. What happens to that agreement?
I don't believe anything related to that would change, but I would have to look into our current policy for what happens for that. I'm not sure.
And we can, we can look into that, and there probably will be contractual provision about what happens if it terminates or revert back to the, you know, the party that had the agreement, or something similar.
Okay, thank you. And one further question, you made a comment about somewhere in your extensive documentation about possibly imposing a maximum allowed parking for unit, for a property.
Yes, so that was part of the parking study. It is not anything that is happening right now. It's something where we can look at it in the future and see where it might have an effect. We currently have some parking maximums in our North Downtown Specific Plan. You know, we can, we will look at the issue and see, you know, how they're affecting things. things and if it would be beneficial elsewhere, or if it would not. But right now, we are only adjusting the minimum, so it's only giving developers more options. It's not constraining them at all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Do you have the information you want from us?
Yes, thank you. So there's no motion tonight, so I have your feedback.
The commission may wish to open up the here, the study session to the public.
Okay, I will do that at this point in time. Is any member of the public here would like to come forward and make a comment on this study session? Seeing three staff members out there, I'm not sure. Thank you. We'll close public, the hearing right now. Thank you. And do you have a comment?
Just to clarify that this is just a study session, so no vote is needed. Thank you.
And moving on to the one item, item 4D, would the Secretary please make a comment on that?
Yes, so this item has been further continued to July 25th, 2024.
So, and the reason that it's on the agenda is that to avoid re-noticing the public hearing, we'd recommend the commission open the public hearing, but continue the item to that time.
Okay, therefore, I will open the public hearing on the Plaza MSP Designer Review Appeal, Application Appeal. Seeing no one rush forward to the podium.
So the public hearing should remain open, and then it will just be continued to the?
The public hearing will remain open till July 25th, 2024. Moving on to item five, commission considerations. Do we have any commission considerations? Seeing none. Item six, commission member or staff reports on announcements.
No reports by staff tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will now therefore adjourn at item seven. Thank you for all coming. Have a good evening.